Well, you gotta stay, um, you gotta stay there, Ms. Blutton.
No, you got to vote.
You're in isolation over there, Ms. Blutton.
At least for today.
No, I'm not, Councilman Ross.
We can move you next time.
No, I'm not.
So, Dave, can we move her down here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we are called to order, and I'm going to, um, read the notice here. Honorable members of council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2.21, and by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, April 9th, 2015, 5:00 PM, City Council Chambers, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to vote on the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Virginia Beach School Board, re-use of school buses during Sometimes in the Water Festival, appropriate 350,000 in estimated reimbursements, and remove the Sunday time restriction. Immediately following, City Council will convene into a closed session for the purposes of the City Council review of the submissions to fill the vacant Beach District City Council seat and identify those individuals to be entered, uh, to be interviewed. Okay, so, uh, we're moving forward, you know, with the ordinance. It's an ordinance to authorize the city manager to exercise an agreement with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools to appropriate miscellaneous revenue. Mr. Hanson, can you give us an update on the status of the communications with the school board and all necessary entities?
Yes, I can. And, uh, for those that have their phones, you can see that I went to my desk as soon as we broke, and I forwarded you a 2:56 PM email from Aaron Spence, delivered to his school board, and it, uh, the, uh, had an attachment of the final MOA between the school board and the city council, of which they will consider this evening at their meeting. And I will read for the council what the superintendent's email said to his school board members. He addresses them as "school board members." Attached is the proposed MOA just finalized between the city and schools for the use of buses for SITW, which stands for Something in the Water, parking and shuttle services. The board is being asked tonight, at the request of council, to authorize administration to execute this MOA. Of note, and he summarizes, still need to finalize the MOA language. This agreement is between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the city. School buses will be available starting on Friday, April 26, 2019, at 5:00 PM, and will conclude transportation services at 11:00 PM on Sunday, April 28, 2019. This will not affect transportation for VBCPS official activities. Bus drivers must be, must volunteer and cannot be required to provide services. The city will reimburse VBCPS public schools for all costs. City is providing insurance and will reimburse VBCPS for all damages that occur during this event, during event use. Weapons will not be allowed on buses, and a security check will be conducted before passengers board. VBCPS will provide buses to transport people from a makeshift parking area to be determined, and you heard Brian brief today, it's probably moving to the amphitheater, and will not be, uh, and that, in parentheses, that area TBD will not be a school lot. Drivers will be paid $30 per hour before 8:00 PM, and $40 per hour thereafter. Overtime will be provided as appropriate. Drivers will be compensated one additional hour to clean their bus. And then attached to his email is the draft MOA that they will consider, one which we have reviewed and which I have provided you a copy, uh, in my email. And I also want to reiterate to the City Council that two evenings ago, I provided you a copy of the agreement, the binding agreement that if executed is between the city of Virginia Beach and the Something in the Water LLC, which talks about indemnity and insurance coverage of all incidents related to the shuttle service that schools will provide.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
I don't have any signed up, sir, no.
Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Moss.
I have always been concerned, and I know our pre-resolution set a vote by the school board. I, I find it that we are voting before they're voting when they actually are accountable for the children's safety, we're not. So, the timing of how we're, the sequencing of our vote, I think is the wrong sequence. Uh, I don't know, what if the school board doesn't approve 11 o'clock? We have to come back here again and have another vote to accept what they want, rather than... I mean, this is my concern about how this has been executed from day one. I expressed it last Tuesday. I thought the people that own the issue, own the safety, are accountable for the safety, and by law are required to approve. They should be setting the terms that they're willing to offer their buses on versus us telling them from the city what terms we want. I, I just think it's the, a bad way to go. I don't like this process. I'm voting no, because I think the process has been wrong. This has been poorly staffed. We were at the end of the whip, and I just think this is not the way we should conduct. And I think the school board should be voting first.
Anybody else? Barbara?
All right, so we are voting on this ordinance. That's what we're voting on, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so this doesn't, um, doesn't include the, the time that it will be over, but this, I'm assuming, just leaves it up to whatever the school board decides. Is that correct?
Well, the, the, the last event for Sunday is over at 10:00 PM. The buses will run to 11:00 PM.
But the, the school board could change that.
They could, very well, they very well could.
So, we would be approving whatever the school board agrees to.
Right, that's what it says right here.
Send Dr. Spence's.
Well, that's why I said, the, the Virginia Beach School Board approves the agreement for the use of the school buses, so we aren't telling them what that hour should be. That's going to be up to them. Is that the difference now?
Yes, ma'am, that, so, if you read it, it, it strikes out the 7:00 PM, so...
Right.
So, there's no, there's no time. So, if the school board says 9:00 PM, the school board says 1:00 PM, that, that's what it would be, yeah.
So, what we are approving is whatever the school board approves as the agreement.
Mm-hmm. Rod, could you give a clarification?
Certainly. Uh, you're approving this ordinance that authorizes, uh, the city manager to enter into the agreement with the school system, provided that the school board votes in favor of that. And you're right, the school board has the ultimate say on what the hours of operation would be.
Yeah, so, can I, can I go back? I want to read, I opened up the PDF file we just got, so maybe it's changed from what they handed us in paper, and this is...
They may not vote on whatever the superintendent suggested.
Right, but this is the point I'm trying to get across. If you would just bear with me for a moment. It said, "The parties will agree to the specific number of buses, driver support personnel and vehicles, equipment, and as well as agreed upon scheduling." The school buses will, will be available on Friday, 20, April 26, 2019, at 5:00 PM, and will conclude transportation services at 11:00 PM on Sunday, April 28, 2019. At the party's mutual agreement, the hours of transfer search may be adjusted. But the mutual parties are not our delegated administrators. It's the school board itself who has to statutorily approve, and us. So, that gets back to my point. If they approve something different, the dollars would change, other things would change. We'd be back here voting again. That's my read of that expression.
Aaron.
I think it's, it's, it's under good faith that we are taking the leadership to say, hey, this is what the times, um, the, the festival ends at 10, and the buses run to 11. This is not something that we've come up with on our own. When you look at, or you talk to our, our public safety and Chief Severa as well, this is something that, uh, when you look at the festival in its entirety, that works best. I know that, uh, the police, and I believe, kind of Vice Mayor, was going to attest to this. The police in themselves would have a hard time, um, if we say, you know, the buses will only run to 5 or 7 o'clock, of making sure we provide efficient and a safe mode of transportation for 35,000 of our visitors coming to our city to get to and from, um, um, their, their parking area. So, while I agree with you, John, um, I would have liked the process to be a lot more smooth and let us have a lot more time to digest this. The fact of the matter is, this festival is, is less than three weeks away. Uh, we have this opportunity, and, and it's, I think it's beholden upon us to ensure that we provide, uh, the best, uh, mode of, of, of transportation possible to ensure the safety and success of this, of this event.
Barbara?
Well, I wasn't finished with my prior question, so we'll go back. Okay, the school board has not yet acted. I know there is something before them that was sent to them by their superintendent, but I'm assuming they will have the option to change that to something else.
It's true. We'll see what the school board does. It's my understanding that the city manager and Mr. Solis are going to the school board meeting, um, to, uh, explain what you have voted on. And, uh, the school board ultimately will decide how detailed they want to be in their direction to the superintendent with respect to this agreement, or whether they want to provide leeway.
But in effect, what we are doing is we are agreeing that the school board has the final authority, and that's what we will deal with.
That's correct. They own the buses.
And therefore, we are not dictating to them what they have to do, or even what we want them to do, as far as the time. We're taking all of that out and leaving it up to them. And it's up to them to decide even whether to use the school buses, but if there's a time limit or not, they may or may not put it on.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
Yeah, John.
Off, off, and, so, the school board approves, say, 7 o'clock, and we ask for 11, so we didn't get...
Seven.
Not, well, I know, I said, we, I said, but now we're saying, in that body of the terms of the MOU further up, it does express what our desire is. It's in the, what we'd like to have is 11, it's a request we made. So, it, but they don't do, they do 7, or whatever. Do we have to come back here? Does that have to come back to us for a vote again?
Your ordinance, um, uh, the amended ordinance that is on the agenda for tonight does not include a time limitation. Um, so unless a council as a body were to give direction to the city manager that you wanted to vote a third time, I do not believe an additional vote would be necessary. Um, as Councilmember Henley pointed out, the school board, uh, will decide how late the buses run. Uh, and unless you give, uh, unless this is changed again to include a time limit, there's no time limit in it now, uh, then there would not be a legal requirement that council vote again.
So, we will adopt an ordinance authorizing expenditure of money that may or may not be required for the requirement that the school board sets?
Well, if you, uh, look at the ordinance, it talks about the estimated reimbursement revenue being 350,000, but it also accounts for the possibility that the total cost could be different.
Jim Ward?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Councilman Rouse said regarding the, um, the police chief. He did, in fact, um, reach out to me about this, because I was the one that actually, uh, made the motion to put the 7:00 PM thing in. And, um, in his discussion with the superintendent and with the folks that are actually in charge of moving those buses around, um, and, and in discussion with his logistics staff and everything like that, they, they feel that, that keeping the, the buses running until 11 or so is, is the, is the best thing for them to move the, the big group of people in and out. And, um, you know, the fact of the matter is, we, we're now hearing that the, that the people are going to be further out. They're going to be out, out here as, as opposed to out near, um, Dam Neck and General Booth. So, it, it's logistically, it, it's a good thing to do, and, um, you know, I, I feel much better after having talked to some school board members the other day where they indicated, because they had so many people volunteer to, to be drivers, that, that there's plenty, plenty of people that, that, that want to do this, and that, and plenty of people that can do this, so that there's not a lot of, um, people getting overtired, which, which was the main issue. So, so I, I'm going to certainly support Mr. Rouse's, uh, motion.
Rosemary?
And, and just for the public, I, I don't want the public to think that we're spending $350,000. We're being reimbursed for this, and they're paying the drivers, and they're covering all the liability. Liability was a big issue for me. They're covering all of the liability, and this is a big part of being able to move the people in and out. Everyone has worked really hard. Uh, it's an opportunity for, gosh, those 400 bus drivers that have signed up to, to make some extra money, put it in their pocket, and, and, uh, and also be of good service to the city. So, I, I think this is a good thing to support.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Brenna. On the island over there.
I just want to just make, um, the comment that I do believe we, um, we do need to move forward, um, because the event is, um, swiftly approaching. Decision has to be made, uh, but I would like to say that from the feedback I received from school board members, they would like, in the future, when something of this nature is being contemplated, that they are more involved in the process. Should be a more collaborative effort than one dictating to the other certain pieces had not been brought together, then some were left out, then... So, it should be more cohesive and more collaborative.
Okay, Barbara?
Just one more question, and, and following up on, uh, what Rosemary, uh, was clarifying. Because we keep hearing this, and I hear it in news reports, that the city is allocating this amount of money and that amount of money. All right, we had initially allocated $250,000, and now we're allocating an additional $350,000. But all of it, whatever the amount is that is spent, will be reimbursed to the city. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
So, that first $250,000 was the beginning, and then we came up with this idea that they were also going to be using buses, so there would need to be more, and that's why this additional $350,000 allocation. But the city is going to be reimbursed in its entirety?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. I do need to have that clarified.
The $250,000 is a sponsorship grant given to them in the similar fashion we give grants to the many other festivals we have. Break, break, period, separate. That's part of our sponsorship to the, to the, to the festival. The 350 is a standalone cost, not to exceed cost in this agreement for the provision, for providing shuttle services with school buses and drivers, fully reimbursable for the actual, actual costs associated with providing that service.
Plus any liability or any payment of any liability, if there is any.
Yes.
And so that is still out there as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I wasn't clear, because I think we've been unfortunately saying that the city was going to be totally reimbursed for all costs. And I think that that is what has been creating my uncertainty with the first $250,000, because now we're saying we're going to be totally reimbursed for all costs, which is not correct. We're not being reimbursed for that first $250,000.
Okay, John.
So, we really don't need, we shouldn't say that anymore, that we're being totally reimbursed.
Yeah, John.
I've never said that, but anyway, but I want to make sure we are telling the school board in the MOU that, because we're the one doing the contract, not the third party, that we are the liability with the school board. But when we do the service to the people providing it, we're having another agreement that's providing all the certification and indemnification. So, when you see the MOU, and it says Virginia Beach, because we're the ones that can only contract with the school board, but we are supplementing and making ourselves harmless, I understand, by the agreement that we are then going to have with the promoters, and that's how we're being, keeping that net neutral. So, that wording can be confusing, but the other agreement will cover that.
That's correct, yeah, all right. All right, if I could just make, uh, one quick comment, but, uh, before we call for the question. The day after we passed the prior resolution, you know, Chief Severa came to my office and said that by en- terminating at 7 o'clock would create, you know, significant amount of logistical problems, and may actually, you know, create some problems that would not normally exist going forward. There would be, uh, people literally stranded and having difficulty logistically getting back to their cars. And so, he was the one that actually, you know, kind of petitioned that we reconsider this. And I think the essence of, uh, this is what's going on. But, you know, let me point what, uh, what, uh, like Aaron said and some others said. You know, this is our first run at a major event right here. And probably the week after this event, we're going to sit down and have a debriefing and look at the positives, you know, the negatives and everything. And this is certainly one aspect of this that can certainly, and I agree with, uh, John Moss and Mrs. Henley, you know, this, this is the type of thing that could be debugged and improved going forward. This is just part of the learning curve, you know, that we're going. Because once again, if you look at the magnitude of this event, there are a lot of moving parts out there. And, you know, like I said, it's better to overplan to make sure that we've got plenty of buses and try to minimize the impact of transportation on that. But, so with that being said, uh, can we call for the question?
Ms. Blutton, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eight to one, you have adopted the resolution.
Who's the one?
Me.
All the, had a red dot with nobody.
I'm in the right seat.
Oh, let me see. They shouldn't have moved Mr. Moss.
All right, uh, the next order of business, I'm going to read, uh, you know, a thing for... Yeah, uh, before I, you know, definitely, I'm going to say, and we're going to go into executive session, but before the, we have one order of, of business that we got to take care of. Right now, you know, we're challenged. We have two open seats, and that pretty much disenfranchises 130,000 residents without representation. And so, while, we're going to adjourn into executive session to talk about, uh, the Beach District seat. But once again, I think we owe it to the public to resolve the timetable that we're going to look forward, uh, going to, for the Rose Hall seat, which is of equally magnitude and of importance. So, um, once again, for discussion and consideration, I'm going to ask, uh, the Vice Mayor to read the timetable that might, under consideration.
Sure, um, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, this, everybody should have received this document last week, and it's, um, basically what it does is, uh, we're at the ninth now, which is, uh, review Beach District applications, provide shortlist for Beach District vacancy. On the 16th, public comment on Beach District vacancy. Uh, we've already got, on the 16th, also adopting a resolution regarding special election for the Rose Hall vacancy. Um, on April 23rd, we've got a special, uh, meeting, and April 23rd is interview for the Beach District finalist. Um, in the closed session, discuss Beach District appointment. At that time, on the 22nd, Madam Clerk, is that when we've got the Rose Hall applications coming in?
That's, that's when the vacant, yes, the applications are due.
Okay, so, so the, the change would be, uh, on the 23rd, the same time we discuss the Beach District, we would be receiving and reviewing the Rose Hall applications, do the same thing we plan to do tonight, providing the shortlist for the Rose Hall vacancy, and then vote on the Beach District appointment. On April 30th, which would be a special meeting, would be the public comment on the Rose Hall vacancy, similar to the public comment we have on the Beach District on the 16th. And then on May 7th, um, interview Rose Hall finalist, discuss Rose Hall appointment, and then vote on the Rose Hall appointment. So, that, that is the dual appointment meeting timeline that the city clerk and the city attorney worked on indicating that. And I think that's, that's the topic of the discussion.
Okay, open for discussion, John.
Was this in the special meeting notice? That we were going to be discussing this particular issue? Was that in the special meeting notice?
Well, I think it was, you know, it was under role business to at least resolve going in.
Are we, I'd like, you're not asking for a vote, come on?
It's not a vote.
Okay, I'm just...
It's just a consensus.
It's just a...
Well, well, consensus is direction, and, and I, and I think that if there's not consensus, then we ought to have a vote. And that takes eight votes to add something to agenda since it wasn't on the meeting. I don't think this is something, because we had a very robust discussion. We were planning, we didn't know this was going to be the night for that robust discussion. And if it's something we're having that robust discussion, it'd be good to hear from the, from the public, too. So, I, I just think, we talk about transparency and notice. I didn't come here tonight at the special meeting. I expected to do two things. One, vote on this ordinance, and have a discussion, and pick out and come back out later talking about our shortlist candidates. We weren't advised until I just, not saying that we can't, but this isn't the spirit of the discussion that we talk about that we're going to have. And, and if we're going to have a discussion, it's going to be a lengthy one, because this is not something that we should just summarily short-circuit people. And then this gets back to that large discussion of someone taking the office on the 7th and voting on the 2.2 million dollars on the recommended confiscation of revenues from citizens, and thinking that in one week's time, and allegedly, all these people are watching and reading all the stuff that we've been doing over months, can competently exercise a vote. Now, I know you talk about how people are disenfranchised. I wish we had a ward system, so that would be true. I'd vote for that when we had the right time. But we have all at large, so no one's disenfranchised, because we all represent everyone. And we claim that we don't have a ward system, so I don't know how anyone's disenfranchised. They just have one less person voting. But the point is, voting should be for a, a purpose of informed judgment. It's going to be hard enough for someone to get, if we pick on the 23rd, and that may not happen, we hope that it does, but it might not, that in the time remaining to get spooled up on 2.1 billion dollars. I think all of us who've looked at that know what a daunting task that is, but to think that someone on the 7th of May, I wouldn't want to be the person voting, because I don't know how you can do your duty of due diligence with that short a period of time for prep. I think the vote on that thing should take place on the meeting after we adopt, the budget timeline permits, or if not, at, after the budget adoption on the 14th. And I just think that, uh, that this rush to judgment, we're all, is not, we're already voting, we could go as long as May 3rd. I think that's, you know, you know, Councilman Ralph pointed that out a couple of weeks ago, but we're doing it on the 23rd. That gives more people time for the budget. Got it? Wouldn't make a big issue. That's hard pressed, but possible. But a week? No, no one is doing due diligence on that budget in seven days. I'm just telling you, that is not possible.
Uh, if I could just say, Mr. Moss, and I certainly, you know, respect your opinion, and I, as I always do, you know, technically, uh, Rod, we could just appoint somebody without even, you know, going through the process. But what we're doing, we're allowing enough time to solicit people to come to the table, and, you know, and vet them and bring them forward. And I think we have a duty to, you know, get these seats filled as, you know, quickly as possible. Now, I will agree that the timing was not optimal. But once again, I think that we have a Rose Hall seat that is vacant, and we have a Beach seat that has been vacant. And I think we are allowing time and diligence to get those filled. You know, the budget consideration, once again, I think Rosemary brought up. You know, they can, anybody that can be briefed and, uh, you know, brought up to speed on things. And, uh, but once again, it's my opinion, and I respect yours, that we have the obligation to fill this as quickly as possible. Jess?
I think, I mean, I would like to echo the sentiments of, of Councilman Moss, but my bigger concern is that, you know, while we don't have a true ward voting system, we as district representatives, representatives have a responsibility to go out and talk to our constituency and hear what they want. And the fact remains is that even if we got somebody online the first week of May, they would have no ability to plan their own town hall, no ability to schedule any kind of constituency meetings. And until they're appointed, they have no authority or power to go out and do that, do that due diligence within the community with assistance in any kind of, you know, professional capacity. So, I think that, you know, we can talk about how Rose Hall may be disenfranchised, but they're not going to be getting adequate representation, because it's not possible for that district representative to serve that constituency in that period of time. I think about the, the work I'm doing with Julie to try to get my own town halls scheduled, and I feel under the gun. And I've been working, going to Civic League meetings and, and whatever meetings I can get to. And, you know, this is year three. So, I, I think it's, I think it's unfair to residents, but I really think it's unfair to whatever individual we put up in this seat and say, hey, good luck, enjoy what you have to then be responsible for. Because at the end of the day, whatever, whatever button they push, they're going to be responsible for. And I, I, I don't, we don't have to rush the Rose Hall seat. The Beach seat has ti- has a, has a strict timetable. We got to be diligent about that. There's more, there is, there is an immediate need there. But the Rose Hall seat, we have time to do due diligence on, and I think that we owe that to Rose Hall residents, as well as any resident.
Rosemary?
Yeah, Rob, but it was my understanding when we decided to go ahead and do the advertising, this week we were talking about the timeline. Didn't we say...
Didn't we say we were gonna talk about the timeline this week? So I, I don't think it should be any surprise that we're gonna talk about the timeline, but I think about the Princess Anne Plaza area, and I've heard from people, that district, that area is separated by the Beach District and the Rose Hall District, and they are the most impacted area on flooding. I mean, Matthew changed our city forever. We have changed our budgeting and our priorities and everything because of what happened with Matthew, and they don't have a councilman from the Beach or Rose Hall. So I think they, they deserve to have someone, and I'm hearing from them that they want representation, but I don't think it's a surprise that we're talking about this tonight, 'cause we said we were gonna talk about it last week.
We didn't say when we were gonna talk about it. Go back and watch the tape.
I said, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we...
Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, I, I think if we had planned on discussing this, we would've all had a copy of that timetable.
Wouldn't they?
It was given out.
It was given out last week?
It was sent out last week.
The, the, so the, the timetable you read was what we discussed last week. I just would've, I would've think that we would've had some kind of agenda that said we're gonna talk about this, and it'd be included in our packet. I mean, that here nor there, I mean, I don't, the public is interested in this conversation as well, but we, just to the other point, respectfully, we have three at-large representatives. The purpose of the at-large seat is to fill the void. That, that has always been my impression, because we don't have a ward system, so the district reps take up the first, you know, front line, and then the at-large are supposed to come in and say, I'm here for whatever the whole city needs, and if there's a vacancy, then I feel like that's the purpose of the at-large seats. Perhaps my interpretation is wrong, but I don't feel like, with having three at-large representatives, I don't see how we have a void, um, when, when that seems to be the purpose of the at-large.
And, and, you know, if I say I, I respect, but Jess, you know, this was discussed, and I don't think we're, uh, there's no resolution to vote on. This is a council direction, you know, to fill a thing, and we, we talked about it, and there were some folks for it, some folks against it, but once again, this is just an opportunity right now, because personally, I see immediacy to fill this seat. That's, that's, you know, my opinion.
Well, I will bring back a resolution for a vote, so the public will have a chance, and we'll find out how well-aligned we are at this dais with what the people's expectations are, and then we can go on record and vote.
Okay. Sabrina?
Well, uh, I would have to, um, confirm the need and the urgency to fill, you know, both the Beach and the Rose Hall seat, because that's what I hear from the constituents. And they are saying to me, uh, in both districts, we are not represented. There are things that a representative in that seat can do for us that at-large cannot, and they're entitled to that representation, and they're entitled to it, you know, as, um, you know, as speedy and as possible. Um, those are their concerns, and I believe that, you know, we need to listen to those concerns. And the other part of it is, if we've made designations for the Beach District, and they should be consistent for the Rose Hall District. We can't give one 20 days, or 44 days, or 45 days, and give the other one 43 or more, because now there's no consistency, and what you do for the one, you have to do for the other. So you have to be fair and consistent in whatever timeline you propose.
And the other thing is, I think, Jim?
Yeah, so, just a couple of things. One, this wrinkled copy was what I pulled out of my, my notebook, because the mayor said, do you have a copy of it?
Gotcha.
When we walked out here, so this is not a pristine copy. Everybody has this.
I have.
Um, the, the one thing I'd say also is, um, I saw the advertisement for this in the paper on Sunday. Um, it's, it's, it's under advertisement now. Frankly, I've already heard of three applicants. Each one of those three applicants, I know for a fact, follows city council meetings every week, and, and has an idea of, of how the budget process works. Probably not as, not as much as we do, because we, we live it like this, but, but I know they all do it. But, but I, I will tell you, probably the biggest thing that I would, I would agree with is what Ms. Wilson said. You've got the, the, the most hard-hit area in, in our, in our city. Uh, that, that area in Windsor Woods is, for whatever reason, hits, it's the Beach District and it's Rose Hall. And, and, you know, ma, maybe at some point when we go back to redistrict in, in a year or two, that, that's, that's something that, that needs to be corrected, so that the Beach maybe more accurately reflects the Beach, and may, maybe there's some tweaking that can be done there. But, but ultimately, the, the people who are directly impacted by flooding, which we're saying is public enemy number one, the, the most directly impacted, and, and I've had this conversation before, and we've talked about it, where I've said, I've gone to Civic League meetings, and I've said, who here has been impacted, and, and no hands come up, because it just depends upon where, where the Civic League happens to be. So, so I, I, I don't think that, that we're doing a disservice anymore by, by having somebody come in a week before the budget, instead of somebody coming in two weeks before the budget, or what have you with the Beach. I mean, it's still a complex, complex situation, and, um, you know, I mean, to, to Ms. Abbott's point, I mean, I think if, if there was a, a desire to have a Rose Hall Town Hall meeting, we could certainly schedule that and allow all the Rose Hall candidates to come to a Rose Hall Town Hall budget. I mean, I, I, I'm sure they would all, they would all show up to that, but, but I think, you know, we, we can't treat Beach and, and Rose Hall separately. They're, they're the same, same citizens, and, and they deserve the, um, the, the representation. So that, so I, I agree with the mayor on this.
And the, the other thing is, I think we have to be decisive on this. I think there's a lot of folks out there that wants this resolved, and I am having Town Hall meetings in every district, which everybody will be invited to, so we're gonna do that. At this point, let's go around and, you know, see what happens. Sabrina?
The question is, should we approve, uh, the recommendation that the Vice Mayor read?
Not a...
In terms of timeline?
Not a...
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Barbara?
I think we need to move forward.
John?
No, when I was at Bow Creek in Princess Anne last Wednesday night.
No.
Aaron?
This, I saw we get paid the big bucks, right? Yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say this, I just wanna say my piece first. I think, as I said before, I know, um, there's two different circumstances here. First of all, we had a council member removed from council, then we had one who stepped down. So I think, in understanding, um, the, the two different situations, I do think, um, I wanna fill, be able to fill the Beach seat, and both seats as soon, as quickly as possible. But for me personally, I'd like to take more time in filling the Beach seat, um, because it was such a contentious race, um, and, and it was, it was, it was a volatile race, and it, and it left a bad taste in people's mouths. Um, the same when it comes to, um, to Rose Hall. Um, I think, I, I like to do my, our due diligence in making sure that people are, are represented, and that we give them every opportunity, um, to voice their opinions. So I'll, I'll say yes on the, on the, I know it's not an actual vote, but on the condition that we, we should hold a, a Town Hall as well as, um, a, a Town Forum for all those candidates, whoever made the shortlist or not, um, to actually have the people come, have their questions, um, um, voiced to those actual candidates who wanna represent their area, and I think that's a way we can, um, make sure they are aligned in the process.
And I'm in the process of having Town Halls scheduled in every district, and we can certainly schedule that accordingly.
But I, I just wanna make sure the candidates there, who want, want to represent that district, I want the people to be able to see their, their representative face-to-face, ask them the tough questions, like we all have. We all have been on the campaign trail, but those tough questions, let them decide as well, and give us their recommendations to who should represent their district.
All right, and I, I appreciate everybody's input, and I think we have a, you know, a direction. Thank you. Okay, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of voter meeting allowed by Section 2.2, Dash 3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employers of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1, interim appointment, Beach District, City Council vacancy. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
Nine to zero, you adjourn.
Okay.
And we're just...
Okay, we're gonna...